Good evening. We welcome you here to our West Valley City Council meeting. We call our meeting to order. We note that we have all council members except one present. We believe that Councilman Vincent will join us later unless we finish pretty fast. So he will join us shortly. We welcome you all here tonight. It's good to have a group of people here. We'll go right down through our agenda. Next item on our agenda is an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilman Member Tom Hune to lead us in that opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. Just Councilmember Stevenson is right here, so that means he's running out of time. It's great. I just wanted by all of you to stand up with me and do the pledging. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the minutes from our last meeting of November 18th. Any discussion or action to the council? Councilwoman Lang.
Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes of November 18th, 2014.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Hune has the second. The motion is before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of November 18th of this year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next on our agenda, we do have some special presentations to take care of here in our meeting. We are welcoming students from the English Skills Learning Center and Granite Peaks Learning Center who have completed some English courses and we appreciate their coming and I believe bring family members with them. What we will do to make sure we get your names correctly, we will just have you line up generally just on this side and come up to our microphone and introduce yourselves, your name. And I think last time we had them actually say where they were from. So just by country, we probably wouldn't know most of the cities anyway. But if you would just indicate and then if you'll come and line up over on this side and just everyone who's receiving a certificate and we'll have you do that. And each of you will receive from the city a certificate for your achievement of skills in English. And we had quite a few. Not everyone is here.
I think the holiday break messed up my group's vibe.
I'm sorry, what?
I think the holiday break messed up my group because it's supposed to end 20, so... I'm from Granite Peaks, sorry.
Okay, well, that's fine. We had quite a few and we know it's a holiday time of year. We appreciate those who have come. The certificates for each of you individually are out in the foyer so that you can pick those up. And those who aren't here will make sure that they receive theirs if they'll be picked up by the administrators. With that, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rosabel Rodriguez. I'm from Mexico City. Thank you.
You? Yes, if you'll just come over to this side and stand when you're done and then just keep coming, we'll get a group picture with the council.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rigoberto. I'm from Mexico. Thank you for everything.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jose Manuel. I'm from Chihuahua, Mexico. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Hello. My name is Long Theng Nguyen. I'm from Vietnam. Thank you.
Hello. I am Thich Phe Yeh. I'm from Cambodia. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria. I'm from Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marisera Septraga. I'm from Brundi.
Hello. My name is Gloria Sanchez and I am from El Salvador.
Hi. My name is Organ Ojeda. Thank you.
Well, we had a lot of people here. Now invite you to come up here, back up here for some photos. And anyone in the audience, you're welcome to take pictures as well. Very well. Thank you very much. We appreciate you all coming tonight. Let's see, Mexico, Cambodia, Vietnam, El Salvador, and Brundi?
Yeah, Brundi.
Brundi, okay. Great group. I think I got everyone's country there. So we're glad to have you here and so you have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay, but certainly you're welcome to go as well. Again, your certificates are out in the foyer. And thank you to the families for coming and supporting. Good to have you all here. Next on our agenda, we have our public comment period in which people are allowed to come and speak on the topic of their choice. Gent, we, any individual person is limited to five minutes. And I believe we have two people signed up. And the first is David Madison. If you would come forward to our microphone and state your name and address for the event.
Great, thank you, Mayor. It's David Madison, 6902 West, 4065 South. And I am here tonight representing the Oakwood Mountain Scout District of the Great Solid Council. And I brought some of our staff with me too, so if I can introduce them really quick. Gregory Phillips is our district executive from the council representing our district. Mike Larm is on our activities staff and Rooster Jensen is our district chairman. So we wanted to come tonight and present a thank you to the city for helping us with an event that we had now not quite a year ago, back in January, where we did our winter camp out that we do annually. We were able to do it over at the Usana property. And so I don't know if any on the city council were not aware that we were out there, but I did bring some pictures just to show you really quick if you don't mind. This is the overflow parking area. So this is west of the main road. And we basically set up camp over there. We had about 300 scouts, youth and adults. This is our morning flag ceremony assembly. You can kind of see we're kind of in that bowl area. The pond would, or the springs would kind of just be immediately to your right. Go ahead and do the next one. And we had all kinds of activities happening there. The boys brought their sleds. We tested them for scout skills, for some survival skills, some first aid exercises. We also had some fun team building games and just some games in general. It proved to be quite a great venue for us and we were really excited about how well it worked for us. Here's just a troop of boys. They made a little burner to boil some water for hot chocolate. So we had a great time. And then this is, I had to throw this in there because A Company was great. They gave us a good deal on getting these restrooms and these portages, but we couldn't get them all the way back into the farthest reaches of that property. And so these boys did this service for their leaders in carrying, you know, roping up one and taking it back so their leaders didn't have to hike all the long way to there. It was a great, great shot. Anyhow, but we wanted to really again extend a big thank you to the city for the cooperation. We had Brandon Hill in the city attorney's office that really helped kind of grease the skids if it were, as it were, with the paperwork and really made it nice and easy for us to come be involved in the city. And just so that you know, our scout district is basically all of the scout troops in West Valley City plus those going west into Magna. And so we serve, you know, how many, Greg, how many great youth are in our district? About 3,000 units. So 3,000 awards magnify that by the number. So that's 3,000 troops. So it was great to have it right here in our backyard, really. And we look forward to the potential of doing this again out there. And so we have a thank you that we wanted to present to the city here. Now, the coin of the realm in scouting is patches. And if you, a lot of you probably know this. And so we have some patches that we make up for the event. I brought some of those for you guys tonight as well. But we have our main district patch, our district logo here in the center. And the patch for the event is the one that's on the top. And it's designed so that as the boys come to the different camps that we host during the year, they can put these patch segments around the center one. And then as the troops accomplish different things out of the event, they can earn these different ribbons. And so we made this and wanted to present that to the city and mayor. So thank you to the city council. Again, I have a smaller version of our district patch that I'm going to start here with Steve. Steve Vincent also is a good friend of mine and was helpful in steering us in the right direction with this as well. So thank you again to the city. And then here's a patch. And on here you'll see that there's the Usana amphitheater over here kind of in the background. And then we have, a lot of times we'll put on little winter animals on our patches. And so there's an ermine there or a stoat on there. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll accept that on behalf of the city council and the citizens. Certainly, we appreciate your coming and thank you very much for that. Years and years ago, I was a scout master, four years. So somehow I managed to get out of it. I see that you didn't. And so you're very committed. So let's see, now you're the next one. This would be Mr. Jensen?
You can say Rooster. That's what I'm known by. So that's correct. What I want to talk to you about tonight is we're trying to, as a district, we're trying to reach out to the community, to the boys that are not being met with scouting in their, in their lives. A lot of what's out there right now is just through the LDS church that's taken place in our district. We want to reach out to, this tonight was moving and great for us to see these people learning English and that are here because their boys are the ones we want. We need them and we need some help with it. So if you've got anybody that's on the fire departments, anybody in the police department, anybody you know that might be willing to take on some of that that knows the language. Because we've got some language barriers in some of these communities that we would have to get over a little bit. And if they can help us out with knowing where to reach out, even churches, other churches that are in the area, anybody we can reach out to to try and establish some other groups, some other troops and cub packs, varsity or venturing groups that we can get going, that would be a community group. We do duty, they do duty to God as part of Boy Scouts and we do duty to country. Duty to God and country. Their God, whatever their God is, we'll work with them and help them to do that. So that's just kind of a plea we're putting out to you. That's just something we're trying to do. And if you guys know anything, if you could help us out with that, that'd be good. You've got my phone number there. If you get in touch with me, if you've got anything that you know or anybody that you are working with within the community, let us know and we'll move forward with that, strive to do it. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming tonight and wait for an enjoyable evening. And with that, we continue on with our agenda. We are now to item number eight on our agenda. And the item that we have is application number S-18-2014 filed by Joe Cunningham. This is a request for final plat approval for Colt Plaza 3 subdivision, Lot 5, amended and extended. This is located at 2938 South Glen Eagles Drive and includes the two properties to the west of existing Lot 5. So we'll consolidate Lot 5 with the two parcels, creating one large lot. There are no current plans to develop this property, but it needs to, the request, or Mr. Cunningham has requested they be consolidated. I think that covers most everything there. With that then, we'll turn to the public comment session or public hearing. And we will now accept public input and I declare open the public hearing portion of our meeting regarding this application. Is there anyone here to speak to? That's right. I'm going to close that hearing. We'll come back to it in a minute. I skipped a couple of items on the agenda. And we have some who would like to speak. So when I did the public comment, I didn't turn to our acting city manager, Mr. Isaac, for any comments?
No, sir.
To the city council? Thank you for making it worthwhile going back.
It seems as we went back, I'll go ahead and make a comment. When the scouts came, Dave Madison from the scout district called me a couple of years ago and wanted to know if there were places in the city where they could camp. Initially, he was, he was wondering if they could use the golf course in the wintertime. And of course, I told him that that wouldn't fly very well. They talked a little bit about doing the camp down at the cultural center close to the river, that they were worried that that was, there wouldn't be snow down there. And so as we, we talked about it literally for a couple of years, we, I said, why don't you come walk with me up to the west parking lot up at Usana? So he and a few other guys from the district, we went up there. It was interesting. While we walked up back there, there's a pond back there and there were deer bedded down there when we walked back there and we scared them out. And they said, this is perfect. This is like being back in the mountains. And so we worked with Legal and with Wayne and with Jim McNeil to make sure everything would work. And so it turned out very well. Of course, that took place while we were having our strategic plan meeting last year. We're grateful that it worked out.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Councilman Vincent brought some pictures back to our meeting and shared those with us and was telling how successful that had been. So that worked out very well. So then seeing no further comments, we, now we will go to item number eight, application S-18-2014 filed by Joe Cunningham for final plat approval. Since we mentioned that earlier in our meeting, I won't repeat that. We will simply declare open the public hearing portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Seeing none? We will close the public hearing portion regarding this application and come back to the council. The council now will consider action on ordinance number 14-45 to approve the amendment on this lot. And so to the council then for comment or action. Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 14-45.
Motion is before us by Councilman Vincent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Hune has the second. The motion is properly before us. So that you're aware and for our record, we note that these are items that we discussed in our previous council meeting, study meeting. And so we had had the opportunity to review maps and pictures and ask questions. So these are items that are now before us for the second time for final consideration or not. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, then we'll place the motion to approve ordinance number 14-45 approving amendment of Lot 5 in Colt Plaza 3 subdivision. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We now go to 8B, which is our application S-16-2014, which is also filed by Mr. Cunningham for final plat approval of, this is Moose Landing subdivision Lot 1, amended and extended. This is the final plat, or excuse me, yeah, final plat approval at 4133 South Colt Court, creating one new building lot within the original subdivision. And that original plat was 11 lots on 4.6 acres. That is the item that is before us. I will now declare open the public hearing portion regarding this application. Anyone here to speak to this application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion on this application and come back to the council for their action or consideration regarding ordinance number 14-46 in connection with this application. To the council?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Hune has a motion to approve.
Application numbers S-16-2014, which is the ordinance number 14-46.
That is correct. With that, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Buehler has the second. The motion is properly before us. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we will place it for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 14-46, approving the amendment of Lot 1 in the Moose Landing subdivision, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We now go to our agenda item 9A. This is to consider an application S-17-2014 filed by Mr. Joe Cunningham. This is for final plat approval for Colt Plaza subdivision located at 3100 South, 5600 West. And to formally divide the property to create an additional commercial lot. I believe that is the item. Again, these are items we've discussed before. To the council for comment or action. Councilman Rushton?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve application S-17-2014.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lang has the second on the motion. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Councilman Rushton?
I just wish I had something, a good question or a good, a good statement here, but you know, Mr. Cunningham has a very proven track record in the city of producing good products and good additions to the city. And glad that we were able to, as a city, move these largely cleanup items through the process and the planning commission and through the staff and the council quickly.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of ordinance, excuse me, of application S-17-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The application is approved. We now go to 9B. Application number S-14-2014 filed by Ivory Holmes requesting final plat approval for Highbury Place subdivision Phase 10. This would be at 5012 West, 2860 South. And these are lots, sizes ranging from, I have noted here, 8,400 square feet to 15,360 square feet, the average being about 10, just over 10,000 square feet. One of the things we noted here, there's a streets 54 foot right of way to allow a 5-foot park strip and 5-foot sidewalks. So yes, just on that basis, these are something that makes them very nice in addition to the homes that are built there. That is the item. That is now before us. To the council for comment or action.
Motion to approve application number S-14-2014.
We have a motion by Councilman Hune to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Rushton has the second. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving application S-14-2014 by Ivory Holmes for final plat approval for Highbury Place subdivision Phase 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The application is approved. That concludes the work in our regular city council session. We will have immediately following this, three other meetings. Our redevelopment agency, our housing authority and municipal building authority meetings. They will begin immediately following one another. With that, I don't believe we have a need for an executive session that completes our work in this meeting. Then one final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman Nordfeldt has a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned from our city council meeting.
I will call to order this regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency Tuesday, December 2nd. Note that all members of the RDA are here and we've had an opening ceremony. We need an approval of the minutes under item agenda four, which is our November, which was our November 4th, 2014 regular meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bigelow?
I would move we approve the minutes of November 4th, 2014.
Second. Okay, we have a live motion before the body to approve the minutes of our November 4th, 2014 meeting minutes. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved unanimously. Any communications or report of our chief executive officer tonight? Okay. Seeing no other business, we'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
RDA stands adjourned. The RDA stands adjourned.
Call to order the regular meeting of the housing authority. Note that all members are present and that we have had an opening ceremony. We have one item on our agenda tonight, which is to approve the minutes of our meeting November 4th, 2014.
Move for approval of seven minutes?
Thank you, Ms. Lang. We have a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Your second to approve. And a second, Mr. Bigelow. Thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Isaac, any communications, report or other business tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
And a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Everyone, motion to adjourn. Will we get a second? No. We only need a second. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Call to order the regular meeting of the building authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and all are present. We are now at item four of our agenda to approve the minutes from June 3rd.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes of June 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Buehler. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. All in favor of approving the minutes from June 3rd?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any communication or reports?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, just one I thought we probably should, for the written record, or for the verbal or audio record, state that the motion passed, generally speaking. I noticed that we're getting away from that, so that anyone listening will know what the results were.
Thank you for that clarification. We'll note then that the motion did pass unanimously. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.